Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Happy New Year, everybody. This is the first meeting of the year. It's, what is it? It's the fourth already?
Fourth.
Yep, February 4th, 2023. Thanks for everybody for coming out in the rain today, tonight. And we'll get started with the minutes. We'll start with reviewing and approving the minutes for the December 21st, 2022 Select Board Meeting. So, and, and the informational meeting that we had for the...
Before that.
Before that, at 5:30, yep. Let's start with that, the 5:30 meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the Select Board informational meeting of 12/21/22.
Give me a second.
Alright, any discussion? I think it was just a rehash of the previous informational meeting.
Just went over and talked about the project.
Yep, yep. Sounds like too, that, I mean, there was an article by the Journal Opinion that covered the meeting.
Yeah, J O was here, so that was good.
Yep. Any other discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor of approving the minutes for the informational meeting for 5:30 on December 21st, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, it passes. Aaron and Tristan, I'll have you guys sign that then. Before I go to the other minutes, I forgot to mention, so Thane, who's been the secretary, is out sick, it sounds like, with COVID-19, so he's not here, so I wanted to make him, make that note. And then, if everyone's okay with having Lisa help pull together the minutes for this meeting.
Yeah, we don't know what the deal is, I guess, with him, so whether he's continuing to stay on.
Yep.
Or we need to find somebody else, or whatever, but Lisa, would you be willing to do the minutes until?
Yes.
Let's hope he's sick. Let's, let's hope, best case scenario, he's sick.
Alright, so we'll move on to the Select Board meeting minutes for December 21st. I was not present at that meeting.
No, I'm here. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of a Select Board meeting of 12/21/22.
Alright.
Second it.
Okay. Any discussion?
No, I think we had to just go over a couple of things on that.
Okay.
We have to redo that budget, since we're all here, we approve that budget.
Yep, and it looks like Aaron, well, I heard Aaron got called out, so came back for part of the meeting, it looks like, 6:25 PM. Okay.
I was curious as to whether or not that meeting was worth it, since there was just one Select Board member here. Was it a weekly college meeting or something?
Okay.
Had another Select Board member came back, so we finished the meeting, so...
I think, when I left, Leece, the discussion was whether or not to hold the meeting or not. And I think what we, me and Tristan, had decided was, we could at least, he could at least open the meeting and hear department updates. He obviously wouldn't, he obviously wouldn't be able to make any decisions.
Until you got back, is what we did.
But since, it was like right at 6:00 or right at 5:30, when everybody had already arrived, rather than sending everybody back again, we knew the board wasn't going to make any decisions, but at least have the department updates, so that the department that showed up, or did have an update, would have been able to, so.
And, and yes, I see that there was, you know, discussion had on various topics on the agenda, and then you came back, and you then didn't make motions on a couple of things on the agenda, but you hadn't heard the discussion, so that, was that really viable?
Kind of fills you in when you got back.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was. I don't know, I mean...
Is it legit to have a, a meeting with one, one board member?
I would say that if business were conducted, it would require a quorum of the Select Board. That being said, as long as the meeting, i- i- if it was just department updates, and the meeting was brought to order with one Select Board member, no meaningful, I can't, I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know, but what I would say is, if there was, if there was a, well, one, there couldn't be any motions brought to the floor. Right, because there wasn't a quorum to make the motions. So any discussion involved, you know, again, it would be, I think, up to, if Aaron returned to the meeting and had any concerns about any items discussed when he was not present, that then he, you know, if, if there was an issue with that, then, then there would be a concern to be addressed, but I would say that...
Wasn't like we were making motions to spend $50,000 to the town, and there was only one Select Board member here, so...
I just wondered if there was, I mean, is there supposed to be a quorum? Is there a law?
Well, we still didn't make any decisions, and we can redo the budget approval decision at this meeting, so that takes care of that. In a small town like this, firefighter is on the board, so we make the best, we do the best we can, so that's what we did.
I, my understanding of open, open meeting laws is it would require a quorum to hold a meeting, however, if, you know, if Tristan, as the, you know, Select Board Member enacting chair, decided to open the meeting, knowing that, you know, Aaron was returning to the meeting.
Which was what we...
It, I think, still fits within open meeting laws.
Do you, like, if I may?
Okay.
The way I understand, my state law, is that you can, you can have all the discussions you want, but you can, cannot make a motion, especially monetary, you know, anything with money, you cannot, that has, that just doesn't go along.
Correct.
But that's basically what, that's what that law states, just, you know. You can have all the discussions you want, and that's legit, but you can't go on.
Yeah, and I would trust Tristan and/or Aaron in that position, if, if during department updates, and obviously in the necessity to keep the, the meeting time moving and continue to get those updates, I'm sure that if there was something that needed to be voted on or a decision was made, that it would have been tabled until there was a quorum in the meeting. So I, I think that, you know, we, my, you know, just understanding of what happened at the meeting, that we still met the intent of the open meeting laws, and that no, from what the minutes say, that there were no decisions made until Aaron returned to the meeting. So that, that's my, that would be my position.
So let's move on.
Any?
No, I mean, I think, yeah, I guess, sort of what had started at the beginning was, the, the board didn't, the board's intent was to hear from the department heads, not to make any decisions. So, that's, I think that was, I think you got legitimate questions, Leece, you and one board member on a three-member board.
I'm only questioning if...
Yeah. So, I think we're all okay.
So, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, we need to add Vorick Grant's driveway update. My guy, I think, is going to try to speak of it, maybe put it either before or after Community Garden, so if their, his topics are together.
Yep, we'll just do that, we'll put it right at the top.
Quick question on that too, we previously kind of had that as a standing, do you want to go back to that, or?
Well, yeah, I don't think we've heard any updates for quite a while, so I think it kind of fell off, it's probably...
Yep. So I, what I would say is, let's, it doesn't necessarily fall under department updates, but maybe we keep them on the to-do list, on the, on the bottom of the agenda, because I know that we're, there's ongoing, active work that's there, and that if, if there's something that we need to make a decision on, we can move it up.
Yeah, you just want to be just clear, is that how you approach things on the...
Yep.
And before, maybe, maybe we could kind of have it as a land commission or something, or assuming it'd be part of the plan?
Okay, yeah, I mean, that, that sounds good, we can, that actually makes sense, yeah. Well, I'll just, I don't know, with NEK broadband, it's kind of same thing, it's sort of doing its thing in the background right now.
Yes, but if something comes up, then I guess I'll shoot up Thane or board secretaries?
Yeah, Lisa for now, I guess, we haven't got any respond back from Thane, as we're not sure what's going on, so.
Okay, any other adjustments to the agenda? So I think, for, for now, Mike, we'll just put Vorick Grant up, up front on the agenda, and then Community Garden following that. Everybody else good with it?
Yep.
Good, alright, so Mike, you're, you're up for Vorick and Community Garden.
Yeah, so on the Vorick grant, one of the things that's come up, just as we've been sort of planning things and walking trail and talking to people, is there seems to be a handful of residents so far that we've interacted with that don't know a whole lot about what the grant's about. So what we were thinking, as a group, we're still waiting for the state paperwork to come in, the agreement paperwork, but what we were thinking as a, of as a group, is it would be nice to push a letter out to, I think there's 54 butters, to the rotten rail bed, and basically, update them on the grant, what's transpired, you know, the money that's come in, and where that money will likely be directed in terms of trail upgrades, trail head, signage, waifing, sort of things. And look to push that out, probably, probably is worth waiting until we actually get the agreement sort of done, but I'll kind of have that teamed up to go out when that happens. And so, what I wanted to put forward was that idea, get your feedback input on, if you think it's a good one, would you guys like to draft it, would we, would you like us to draft it, send it to you to push out, would you like us to mail it out, I think we'd be asking for the town to cover postage, and that sort of thing. I think the target list is, that we have is 54 addresses.
Okay. I mean, I, in my opinion... The more they could, if we could help out, and whatever, and you could draft it, send it, bounce it back off of us, and, and then we'll reimburse you for the, obviously, for the postage.
Or we can just get out of our postage line, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I'm happy to, I mean, I think we're happy to help review any, anything that you want to, that you want to send out for correspondence. I definitely think it's fine for you guys to send it out from you, from the group that's working on it.
Yeah.
Any questions that would be generated from the letter would get kicked back to you guys anyways, so.
Right.
So, I guess we'll, we'll approach it that way, we'll run it by you. Okay. Send it out under the Vorick Working Group's name, and provide some contact info.
That would be great.
That would be good. Just another suggestion too, Mike, would maybe even put together, because we're going to have an in-person, an in-person town meeting this year, is maybe put together a table or display of, of what the grant is, what we've been funded, you know, what the plans so far are, that kind of thing, it just might be good, because I know we generally get a good, a good showing at town meetings, so maybe another opportunity to kind of get the word out, so. Alright, so we'll proceed on that front, and I think, we have our next Board meeting
next week, I'll talk about it with the group, and we'll finalize timing, but I think it makes sense, in conjunction with the agreement, once the agreement's been signed with that, so. And hopefully, it will kind of get ahead of just answering questions and things like that.
Right, right.
Because work hasn't started, because we're still waiting on the agreement. Alright.
And that letter's only going to the rail trail blockers?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's good.
I mean, I think we, I think those are the ones that...
That would really have an interest in.
Exactly, and then we can hit the rest of the people, maybe, in the meeting.
If you can help us with, like, something for that, if you're running like a map for town meeting, and then also, I can do a butters list, and I can text you mailing lists.
Oh, alright.
So let me know if you want that type of help.
Yeah, alright, yeah, I was talking about, well, Michael Mayness is involved as well, so I'll, I'll see where he is at with the addresses, but no, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, Dorothy. Yeah, what I just handed out was a Community Garden produce stand, one of the things that, we picked up a grant this last year, a seat grant from a New England group, and we've been using that to kind of fund materials and stuff like that, but one of the things that's kind of surfaced is how useful a produce stand would be, that kind of has a sign associated with Community Garden. We've got the money via the grant, the idea would be to kind of have this, and I've talked about it a little bit with Carrie and Lisa, have it adjacent up front where the picnic table is, I guess, right in that zone, near the community building, during the season, when produce is happening. The rest of the year, it would be back, or kind of storing things, the back side of the building. I think it would help with just distribution of produce, sort of seven by 24. The idea would have a, have a small refrigerator in there for highly perish things like kale and lettuce, there's an outlet, it appears, I haven't tested it, but there's an outlet plug there, that we can plug it in. I think it would alleviate some of the library distribution stuff, the library hours, and people getting access, and stuff out in the sun, and that type of thing. I think it would also help beautify just the community building. And the idea behind this is to kind of leverage local students, so students design, that design that you're looking at, is part of a school project, and we've spoken with River Bank to have some of their students build it, and we had that call in the fall. So I guess what I'm looking for, on behalf of the Community Garden Group, is permission, okay, to have a home for this, adjacent to the community building, assuming that number one, River Bank can still build it, okay, on their schedule. But the idea would be, if that, if that could line up, to kind of have that out there starting early this summer. And again, it would be up, you know, probably June-ish to mid-September, late September, and then make its way into the back area.
Yeah, I was like, my first question was just, is it movable, but it sounds like you're intending to move it off-season.
And it couldn't just stay over in the, in the garden area with the stuff?
It could stay anywhere, I think, the question about this is, make it easily accessible for people to drive up and get things, make it, keep it visible, kind of top of mind, a little bit.
Right. So my only thing would be, I'm fine with it all. Personally, I guess, when it comes time to setting it up, when you get it, whatever, is kind of figure out a good place for it, and, and then go from there, I guess. Is it lockable or closable, or you just leave it open all the...
You could, you know, we haven't added a lock there.
Right, well, I didn't know with the refrigerator, I just, I don't want a problem, and then it turns into a...
Refrigerators are just secure.
Right, I just, but then somebody has to babysit it every day, and...
I think, you know, if we're concerned about that, we should probably just cut the refrigerator and route it away. Personally, I think we just roll with it, if we want to do it.
See if, if it's, you know, it's funded and whatever, and you can see how it works, I guess the only thing I would say, if it doesn't seem to work out, then if, it doesn't just end up there and nobody, it's abandoned, let me, let me put it that way, that it's taken care of. If it, if it works, and it's a great thing, great, but if it doesn't, it disappears.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. I mean, and, and I think that the placement here makes sense, for sure, but if, if it's not getting, you know, the, the activity, you know, it's not getting people to come, and then, you know, thinking about alternative locations that it could, that it could be as well, just, you know, kind of, but I, I mean, I, I like the idea, I like that it's funded, I like that it's, you know, student, students made the, you know, made the...
Yeah, it's good.
The, you know, the drawing here, and so...
I say yes.
Okay. Is that a, you want to make a motion?
I don't know, do we need a motion to approve it, or are we making a motion that...
I, I don't, I don't think so, I mean, it's a free stra, it's, it's a freestanding community, I wouldn't even call it a structure that's movable, that's going to be maintained by the Community Garden.
We're going to hold Mike responsible for it, so, we're good.
Yep. So I'm, yeah, that sounds good to me. That sound good to you, Aaron?
Sounds good to me, yeah, alright, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Alright, infrastructure, Mill Street project updates. So I know we had the informational meeting, so hopefully that checked the box for that, and it sounds like...
We're still just, still waiting on...
Still waiting on the...
Which wouldn't be till spring at this point. I have our archaeological study, or whatever, and, right?
Yep, so that's the update, so, and it sounds like, you know, based on that, we're probably pushing out groundbreaking for it to 24 at this point.
Right. Yeah, because we kind of discussed, if, even if it gets all together, everybody's full by summertime, you really want to bid it out in the winter, spring, spring when people want jobs, and looking for projects.
Exactly, yeah.
And things could change a lot, and things could drop, and be better for them anyways, even though we all want to get it done.
Is there any expiration date on that fund, or grant, or whatever you call it?
The USDA grant?
The USDA grant, I don't believe so, it, it's earmarked money, so technically, we're still in the grant process for it, but it's, we have specific, specific funds that we've been approved as, as an earmark for us, that's kind of where we're at, getting through all of these steps, it's, it's quite a lengthy process, because it's the USDA that's involved, but there, as far as my understanding, there's no expiration date on that. The thing that has an expiration date is the ARPA funds, but that is, I think, way out.
To ALV.
Okay.
Once it has a home, or whatever, then it's secure.
Which we've done already, basically, so, you know, that doesn't have, have any expiration date either, so.
I was just curious, because I know there's grants that can run out on certain dates.
Yeah, as, as far as I know, from the, the meeting we had with Sean from the USDA, who's our direct liaison for this project, the biggest thing that they're looking for at this point is that the project is continuing to move forward, and it's meeting all of the, it's meeting all of their requirements, which it is, part of the reason why there's the delay right now, is because one of their pieces of the project is making sure that there's been an archaeological assessment done of, specifically from looking at the piece of property that we're going to cross at the bottom of Mill Street, but, you know, that's a process, so.
Which, yeah.
It's gonna, and we're, right now, we're at the, I think, I think based on who we're using, it's University of Vermont is who we're waiting on at this point to schedule that, and with the ground frozen, the, the potential, it sounds like they're probably going to need to do some digging in that area to, to determine if there's any archaeological significance, you know, by the river at this point, so. But at this point, as long as we keep it moving, the USDA is happy to, to, you know, they're, they're happy, keep the money, so. Okay, anything else on infrastructure? Nope, I think we've been there for the timing. Alright, budget discussion, so...
Which we already, we had already discussed the budget, we were just...
So it sounds like, yeah. We needed to add the underneath for the Zoom account. Where, where does that live in the budget? Do we, do you remember?
Page 17.
Oh, 7, that's right, we put it with, we moved it under IT.
Page 5.
So, yeah. Miscellaneous. Oh, yeah, underneath, yeah, cool, underneath miscellaneous, gotcha.
Okay.
Does it make sense for those, because, just for argument's sake, does it make sense for us to put, there's two there, the website and the Zoom account, under the new IT and tech services budget line?
Which, yeah, I would think it would go under...
Technically fall within those, that way they're not...
IT, I don't know.
Miscellaneous is fine too, I'm just wondering, it's something that just popped into my head. Okay.
It's fine for now, because we don't really know what we're going to do with it, we're doing it for, we're adding it to this year.
Yep.
I don't know.
The, the town website, though, I mean, that's going to be...
Town website should probably be on tech services.
Yeah, that's, we, and we're going to have a regular budget line for that anyhow, so that might make sense to go under IT and tech services. But I, I agree, leave the Zoom in miscellaneous, just because it, sorry, I can just...
You're overthinking it.
I'm overthinking it, yeah, what, the Zoom thing? Yeah, hopefully.
Right.
Hopefully, I don't, I don't know that there's going to be a huge need for it, unless there's another pandemic.
No.
I hope not.
There's always going to be a pandemic, the way this is going.
So with that, do we want to call it back to a vote, to approve it, reapprove it, or...
Yeah, we need to, yeah, we need to...
Yeah, I think Chief was here.
I think Chief, yeah, do we want to do that, yeah, I mean...
I think he was.
Yep. No, go, go right ahead, Chief.
The part of my question goes, and this is what I had to expect from you, so, but you see, emergency durable equipment, that I'm concerned about.
Yep.
I just, just to give you kind of an explanation, and I can kind of give you my input a little bit on my concerns, why.
Okay.
Well, I'll give my concerns on the deal first, and go on.
Sure, so, Chief, I just want to say, I apologize, I meant to call you about this, and I just, with everything being everything, right now, kind of, kind of crazy, so, but definitely, I mean, I think it's worth having the discussion about it, so, I, and, we, we, if it's alright, I'll just start by saying, we discussed in, in December, December 7th meeting, about potentially reducing that budget line specifically because of what the fund balance for that account is, and then also because we know that we're, we've seen quite a few increases on things like the ambulance service contract and other stuff, so we're trying to find where the right balance in the budget is, so that's kind of where we were looking at with that reduction, but, you know, I want, definitely want to get your input on your concerns, for sure.
My concern, this is kind of... This is just a tip of the iceberg, I just jotted down a few things that have come up, because we just got some prices, we, we've got some, lost two lines in our fire that we had, five inch lines, and they run about, so, we're on 12,000, 1,500 dollars a piece, or 100 foot section of fire, so we've got, you know, we've got some rest of the lines, couplings, they run about 700, 800 dollars a piece, we've got a few lines, when you set up, I got hose testers that's going to be done, we had some issues with some hoses, and being questionable, and that was about 1,200, the hoses, all hoses, and the pipe, and I don't know, depends on what the outcome is, whether we have to replace pipe, or what happened. Then I have, of course, radios and pagers, it seems like, you know, we get more people coming onboard, especially the last one, pagers will run about 400 dollars a pop. Radios, because of our radios, we have issues with our radios, the one I've got, 100, since I've been on the department, so it's pretty 20 years, so, I don't know how much, I think it's going to last me, but it's still, it's still hanging in there, but I'm not questioning that. But the price on radios, what we need right now, is going to run about 16 grand, and that, that's not cheap, I mean, no matter what you're going to look for. You know, that's kind of like the tip of the iceberg, my other concern was, we, I remember that we had an issue a long time ago about... concern was, I remember that we had an issue a long time ago about there were items in my budget that should have moved into the, into the durable goods item issue. Usually when you sat and taken, uh, when you take from one, you've got to make up the difference somewhere, you know. Uh, and that's one of my concerns. So when you sat, uh, no, uh, that was one of my concerns, when you sat and taken away from one, thinking, okay, how am I going to replace this? Because, and then, uh, and like I said, this, this is just a tip of the iceberg that I got concerns because, uh, just some short items that just popped up here just since the fire, uh, that we've got to deal with. So, uh, and that's not talking about servicing the engine. Uh, again, hopefully we won't have the same problems we've had with accidents last year. Uh, and the tanker goes into the services and rescue. And of course, everything that you sat, adds up costs for, SDA's are running between, for a pack is like between six to eight thousand dollars. Depends on
Yep.
It's not going down. Their models are eight hundred dollars a piece.
But you have other budgets you're running, you're using out of that, because you just bought some new Some new stuff. Not out of that reserve fund. Your radios?
Yep, we, yeah.
Everything comes out of that fund?
We moved all
Do you know, do you know how much money you have in that fund?
Well, I just had ten grand I put in, because we got three sets turned out here we just purchased. So that was over ten grand. So I don't know what the total is right now.
There's forty-five thousand dollars in
If that's what it was, it is now, because that's the ten grand being taken off. Now, that brings it down to that. And you have to understand, the Fast Squad is involved, is incorporated with this, too. They just all fired.
Yep.
So, uh, and that, I guess that's one of my concerns, is when, you know, the volume drops out. We have stuff that's getting older, and I'm trying to keep on top of it. So we're not going back to taxpayers and say, hey, if we need a thirty thousand dollar this, or forty thousand dollar that, whatever occasion maybe, you know, and try and keep things in a cycle.
Yep.
That's, that's my concern, so.
And I, I mean, I'm assuming you guys have a pretty regular maintenance schedule for checking everything and making sure it's all
Actually, we check our, we check our SBA once a month. Uh, they get, they get full testing once a year. Full test, uh, that runs total, all of them. SBA runs over a thousand when that's done. And that comes out, that comes out of the capital tool, so. Fit testing, fit testing, I think, can we get that through our operating budget? That deals personnel.
Yeah.
And that's, like I said, that's just what I can think about on top of it.
Yep. I, I think, you know, the, the big thing that
We took ten out of it, and it's still fifteen thousand. It was twenty-five, and we cut it down, we reduced it by taking ten out of it. But fifteen thousand, you're saying you need twenty-five, it didn't used to be twenty-five thousand. You need twenty-five thousand?
I'm just saying, what I got right here now, and I have, I'm just, I'm just
Just, look, I, no, I mean, you know, you've got to do what we've got to do, too. So that's all. I'm just, I'm asking a, what, you know, like, you know, you're saying you want all of the twenty-five?
Well, yeah, well, I am, because I'll be, I'll be frank with you, yes, because I have, like I said, when we sagged in the radios that we need, and we said, have to get more pagers because we get people, we get more people coming onboard.
So, so, okay, so let's say we put the ten back in, so does that mean next year it needs to be twenty-five, or maybe it could have been reduced next year? Does it have to be twenty-five thousand dollars every year?
No, no, it doesn't have to be twenty-five thousand a year.
Well, okay, so that's
No, I'm just saying, no.
Yeah, so that, that's why, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, I think, um, you know, right now with, you know, and I know you, you know, you said you spent some of the money out of there, but, you know, now there's almost, you know, there was almost fifty thousand dollars in that account. Um, we've increased it, you know, year over year, we've increased it now to twenty thousand that we're putting into it every year. Um, you know, what we're talking about is, you know, and I know we discussed when we started the budget planning of having twenty-five thousand in there. And one of the, one of the big issues that came up since then is, you know, the, and again, that's where I'm looking at it from a balance perspective, is, you know, the ambulance contract went up, you know, crazy.
Fifteen thousand.
You know, it went up a lot.
Not, not the
And, and we need it, you know, and I, and I'm not going to deny that we don't need that, so.
If you try to go get ambulance service from the town
You know, the deal, you know, it goes out to the taxpayer, so, and all, we, we
He asked for twenty-five, we gave him fifteen, so a compromise would be put it back at twenty where it was before.
Well, that's, I mean
I'm just, like I said, I'm just sharing my concern, because if I, if I would like to say, I'm not going, I got Fast Squad that I got to deal with on this thing, too. So and hopefully, you know
But Fast Squad is here.
Yeah.
How much, so, how much have we spent out of that account?
I'm thinking
Just ten?
Last year. Was that ten for the PPE, the
Yeah, so that was, that's eleven thirty.
Oh.
It was forty-seven thousand, forty-five. So I know he did just spend ten on
So it's down to thirty-five?
It might be down thirty, thirty, thirty-five down there. So I mean, I think And the other, the other idea with the, with the, the capital reserve, with the capital, the budget is that it's not spiking every year.
Yep.
So that when the chief needs to buy four air packs, he's not increasing his by ten thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three and then bringing it back down again.
That's, you know, that's, yeah, that's why we have the reserve funds to, to make that happen.
I'm trying to look ahead and try to keep my, everything balanced out, so I'm not, you know, I'm not caught, you know, caught, you know, britches down.
Yeah, I mean, I think a compromise would be to go to the twenty, and then, and then the, the chief and the board just
I wish we'd had this discussion sooner than now, because, but we, you know, like, we've been working on this budget for
Yeah.
But that's, I mean, yeah.
No, I must, I might add that, um, they are a fire department
Wait a sec, wait a second. We're having a discussion, Lee, with the select board and the fire chief here. Can we have a, continue our discussion as a select board? Thank you. So, as far as, and that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think
I don't have any issue with
If you want a compromise
If we give, give him five thousand, and then between the, the fire chief and the select board, just monitor that over the next year and see if it's where it's going.
Yeah, maybe, maybe things, you buy a bunch of stuff and it could go down
Yeah, if he ends up at eight thousand dollars at the end of the year, or forty-eight thousand dollars at the end of the year, then one of us is going to know one way or the other.
Well, and I know, like, part, part of, we've, I think you've done a really good job of building that fund up over the last few years. That's kind of why we were looking at this, you know, a, as a potential, you know, a potential area of, of, you know, adjustment. But, you know, I'm absolutely amicable with, with, you know, compromising the twenty thousand and, and keeping it, if that's all right with you, Chief. And I think, you know, again, as Aaron said, we need to keep monitoring that. Because that, you know, with that fund now being, you know, if, with, with using ten thousand out of there, it's going to be around thirty-five thousand. That brings it up over fifty grand. That gives you leeway. So if, you know, if you have another fire and all your hoses freeze up, you got to replace everything, and hopefully not, right?
Yeah, hopefully not.
Then, then you have that available. And, you know, if you spend fifty thousand dollars in the next year for durable equipment that you need, then we look at it next year and go, yeah, we need to increase that because we need to fill that fund back up.
I mean, you've been, you've been on this side of the table for, Chief. So you see some of those funds, if they keep going up and going up, then the board's got to look at it and say
Yep.
That's fair.
The board, the board makes the final decision, isn't me. So, uh, my concern is, I just don't want to be left, I don't want to be left over the bag and find out that I'm short and not knowing where. I hate to have to come back to the board and say, look, I got to have X, Y, and Z, and I definitely don't want to go back to taxpayers and say, you know, that's the last thing I want to do.
Well, and I, I'm, I think we're all on the same board with you there, Chief. We want to make sure that we've got the budget balanced the way we need it to be. And I think now, I mean, the, the biggest thing is, you know, last year's budget, um, was a challenge. This year's budget, with everything going on, is even more of a challenge because, you know, we thought last year's inflation was bad. This year's inflation's worse and, you know, and so we're, we're looking at it and trying to make sure we've got that right balance, so that we're not shortchanging you, so we don't leave you, you know, um, with, with the potential for not having the funding you need to get, get what you need. Uh, but at the same time, making sure that we manage a, a budget appropriately, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so five.
Thank you, Chief. Well, yep, so we'll put that at twenty for the year and, okay. So I'll make a motion to, um, approve the twenty twenty-three budget with the corrections stated for the Zoom account and for the emergency services durable equipment, um, reserve fund, um, contribution to twenty thousand dollars.
Agreed.
That's a motion.
Oh.
Second it.
Any, any further discussion on the budget?
At least one adds something to the budget.
At least you have something to add for the budget?
I just wanted to say that it, you know, it's, it's imperative that the fire department has proper equipment to block and fight fires. And, um, regardless of what the cost might be, I think the taxpayer that may be, um, more apt to approve a budget higher for the fire department, knowing that it's going to protect us.
Yep, well put, well put. Thank you. Any other discussion?
No.
All right. Um, all those of, all those, geez, let me start that over. Just lost my, lost my brain completely. Um, all those, uh, in favor of approving the twenty twenty-three budget with the mentioned adjustments signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Now the budget can go before the town and town meeting day.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, Highway, any updates from Highway?
All as good as I know.
I have the Highway file sheet, I'm going to do it again. Want to do that now? So that comes from state every year.
Oh, okay.
You guys sign, no changes, and then I sign, send back.
Okay, perfect, good.
You got to be a metal bottle.
Okay. Any, that's it for Highway?
Uh, yep.
Okay. Uh, Treasure, Le- Lisa?
Budgets were handed out. Um, a spreadsheet showing how the end of the year ended and how, and start of twenty twenty-three. So, um, those are member base boxes, and you have, you know
Yep.
We're working on end of the year, ordering, driving back to the town for, we're waiting on write-ups, um, for the town report, to get it to, um, printers. Somebody from the select board needs to write up something.
We'll work on that.
Yeah, we'll work on that, yeah.
Some tearing reminder, and I think your chart might need to be reviewed.
Updated.
Okay. Um, watershed document and, um, orders to sign, the permit for the chair to sign.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I would love it for you. Um, and there's lots of open POs that I'm starting to do, so there'll be lots of, lots of those happening in the next few weeks. Still working on the SAM dot gov renewal. I, um, been working on this since end of November, and, um, it's a little headache. And I, um, found two people that, um, understand the headache and got on Zoom with me.
Yeah.
And, um, knew exactly what to do. So we're, we've got one phase done, and now we're moving on.
Oh, you finally got to do the Zoom thing, right?
Yeah, did, yeah, I see this. So it's still waiting, you know, it's not done, but, um, it's, you know, very important to have this moving, so. Um, and I think that is it.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. All right. Um, Town Clerk?
I did the camera training. I think everybody's going to watch that video, too, to be able to do it at the same time. So that's, you know, it's quite a big deal, I think, to go on the web-based tax bills will go through a whole different way now.
Okay.
It'll go through their system. We'll still be able to use Nimric. So it's, it's quite, the blockchain thing is really going to be quite a change for all the towns. It's quite a good undertaking. And it's going to start, you know, they phased it in, but the tax billing is going to start this year, so that's going to be huge in the next, you know, after April.
Yeah.
To learn the whole process on a whole new system and get the bills out.
And make it work.
Yeah. So, uh, that was really, really interesting training. And I'm glad that they're having it. They're saying they're going to keep doing it, it's all free, because they need to get every town's got to do it, so.
Okay, good.
Um, I did get a gentleman call from Department of Health. They're pushing, as the Northeast Kingdom, the radon testing.
I just heard a thing about that today. How many houses, a lot of places have radon, yeah.
So they're sending third kits. People, it's not like the COVID ones that are sitting there. You have to contact me because I need your name and information, because I have to give that all back to the Department of Health. So I think they said a couple weeks, they reached out, sent a little flyer and all, about upfront on the website stuff and
They talk about, so if you do have radon, then what, what's the process for that? Do they help you with your house, or you, what's the next step?
One in five, one in five homes have it.
Here's the number of local concrete, okay.
Costs between fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars per state to a radon problem.
So that's not, that's not
And I would say horrible for radon, if you have it, if, if you test it, it, it's present in your, in your home, you may be able to fly out through your homeowners insurance to have some of that covered, too, because it
That's good for people to get, yeah, that's good, so.
Yeah, so that's going to be a couple weeks, we'll send it out, and then, then they're only doing it for so many weeks, and then whatever we have left, they're going to send back.
Oh, no kidding. No, you can't like send on them.
I know, I almost think it'd be through town meeting, it would be
Yeah, we're trying
When, when do they, when do you get them?
I thought around sixteenth of January.
January, and you have to return them on?
I think it's February third.
Oh, geez, only two days short of winter. Can you ask them if they can accept it?
Maybe they'll redo another, it might, different, I don't know, because I don't know how many people.
Yeah, well, once we get, maybe if people start, you know, we have a list of people, and it's over the thirty, we can already ask them more.
Do you, do you have to fill out a form or something, or is it just letting you?
He hasn't sent it yet. I think it'll be with the test, instead of the name, address, maybe contact.
Good, okay.
So that's that. And then I gave you, well, I gave everyone the ballot sheet for the end of the year.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, um, yep, hold on, I want to just
Work hard on getting everything done today. There still could be a few things I would think of, but pretty much everything is how it is.
So
So the fund balance
Fund balance is three hundred and eighty thousand. Is that that?
Yeah.
Number at the bottom of the first page. Okay.
And you can
Yeah.
You can, um, actually add the highway to that, too.
Oh, the highway is on the next page. It'll work. And the amount, that's our, the funds, that's, that's going to be that. Uh, the highway is thirty-one thousand dollars, thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-two. So part of the reason why their fund balance is lowered, because we used that last year to offset
Yeah.
The amount raised by taxes.
So that does include the hundred and fifty that the town approved to use for the drainage.
Does or doesn't?
Does.
It does, which means
I mean, it still had, we still could use
It's actually
To balance out that budget.
Right, so if you think of three eighty, just think of four hundred minus the one fifty.
So it, it is going to be two hundred and thirty thousand, roughly.
So we can still balance out.
So that's what you need to decide probably by next meeting, so that can go into my figures for the town report on how much money to be raised in taxes. You know, we take the budget, we subtract the revenues that we anticipate, and then we can subtract what you're going to use for fund balance, and that's what will be raised in taxes.
Correct.
Kind of that spreadsheet I left you guys last time.
Yep. Yep.
And then that highway fund balance, is that still, because have, have the budget set up, still the road commissioner? To just, that's the
It's not, it's not anymore for the road commissioner. I don't know, to be honest, if there ever was, that. But, um, I know that's the way we did it, and we found out it's, you know, it's not
Yep.
So
So is it, so it's two thirty plus that thirty-one, so it's two sixty?
So it looks like your, our budget
Yeah, it's, well, three eighty Yeah, it's, well, three eighty.
Three eighty minus one fifty.
One fifty, two thirty.
Two thirty plus thirty is two sixty.
Yeah, right.
And the, and the road, then, road, it's gonna be all one budget.
Well, that's two separate topics we're kind of talking about, so they changed the rule on highway money. Used to only be able to be spent on highway, now it can be, you know, so.
Needs to offset.
Carol came down and did something and highway is still paid.
We don't have to be tracking it separately, highway versus town.
Yeah, that's a, and that, we should probably at some point discuss that as policy.
So that's a statute that got changed from state law?
Correct, but we, we should, we should probably adopt the policy in line with that, that specifically says, so that we don't have, you know, the, the town building fund paying for plowing for here.
Well, we've had, yeah, because we've had discussions about, well, I'm not doing that because it comes out of my budget and none of whatever.
It's all the same, it's all the same, but.
Right, and I always think of it as, Lisa does payroll for highway, highway doesn't pay Lisa out of highway.
Correct, yeah.
Same idea, payroll is Lisa's job, she does it, it's paid under her.
And I can also see it the other way too, I mean, I worked at, when I worked at the hospital, I paid, if I paid for something out of my budget that was for another department, they reimbursed me, it's, I get like, I get the thought process there, doesn't necessarily mean that it's.
Well, I think everything's really easy, right?
Yeah, it will, yeah.
Have the headache from that.
No, we don't have to, yeah.
And then the articles, that is, can do it any way you want, together or separate.
Before we, just, just, I think, before we get to that, so that we have an idea to, to think about till the next meeting when it comes to the fund balance. The, the fund balance, so with the way our budget is now, um, we have an increase in our budget of.
Fifty or sixty?
Sixty-one thousand dollars now.
Still?
You added five?
I don't think we added five, so.
Sixty-five, sixty-six thousand dollar increase, that's correct.
So, could we take sixty-six?
For both budgets together.
Out of the fund balance to balance that out?
I would be in favor of that.
Why, why wouldn't we do that, why, that makes sense?
Yeah, no, I, yep, I think the big thing to remember too is the fund balance being, it, it's, it's a dimin, it should be a diminishing fund, we shouldn't continually have.
Be growing every year.
But still comes from the same place, it's to pay the taxes, you know, it's to pay the bill.
Well, but, yeah, the fund balance is what's left over in the budget at the end of the year. So, after we raise money by taxes, which, you know, with, looking at what our, what our fund balance is, what, what was our actual to budget, was, what was the difference from?
So it's written on the first page, so it's seen as negative eighty.
Yep.
So that's this year's fund balance.
That was added to that, correct?
Subtracted from it.
From it, so we used.
So look up above at four sixty, is what it was?
Yep.
It's three eighty.
Eighty, eighty got used as a fund balance, so we'll get, we used a hundred thousand that you got approved and we used forty to fund that reserve fund, so a hundred and forty. So really, if all of our budget was spent to the penny and we brought in exactly the revenues we thought we would, that should be a hundred and forty, negative a hundred and forty thousand. So we actually didn't spend all the fund balance that, if you know what I mean? It should have been a hundred and forty, I don't mean it's in a bad way, I just mean, if everything's spent to the penny, that would have been negative one forty, and that would have been right, that would have been right.
Because the allocated funds spent them from the fund balance.
So now we got a little more revenues than anticipated and never spent all of our budget.
Yep, so that's where we're at.
So we have a negative E and a negative one forty.
So in essence, we're, our budget was sixty thousand dollars.
But revenues were higher too, so.
Yep, no, no, let's, I mean, what I'm trying to get to is like, what, what, what was in our budget for 2022? What was our bottom line number?
So if we look at the end of your budget.
What is our final budget, you know what I mean?
Look at the end of the general fund budget.
Yeah, he always goes last page, that's not.
You?
So, yep.
No, okay, yes.
Sixty-seven, six oh two is the budget, we spent six seventy-two, which sounds like why we've spent over budget, but really that should be, see, the grandpa budget actually is the forty thousand.
Yep.
So, which was not budgeted, so we should have been over budgeted like forty thousand, and we weren't even over budgeted like forty thousand.
Technically, we were.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Yep.
So thirty-five thousand roughly for the grandpa budget.
Correct.
We did spend.
And we didn't spend, yep.
And a hundred thousand, we do have the, the fund balance, and all that.
Right.
Is just a negative E.
Yep.
And you can do that same thing for the highway.
Yep.
Um, revenue to expenses gets done at thirty-three, whatever that was, thirty-five.
So at the end of the day, if we wanna, we would balance out our, use the fund balance to balance out our, right?
At the end of the day, the fund balance should be stagnant, but, I mean, that's kind of, it fluctuates a little bit, but, that's where, just so that we think beyond this year, is if we use, you know, that's where, if we use two hundred thousand dollars to offset the budget this year, that's not gonna leave us very much of a fund balance to do that with next year.
No, I, I would say if we do, obviously a safe bet would be, in my opinion, sixty-six thousand dollars and it would, it would balance our budget out for this year and then,
And I think with. When I think with inflation and.
See how it goes for next year, what, does that make sense?
So, just your, your, your idea of using sixty-six, thinking that that's the difference in the budget? That, so if we ran save that numbers with that, the tax rate would still be higher, because last year we used.
A hundred thousand dollars, correct.
So that's not gonna, it's not gonna totally even it out, it's obviously gonna help.
But we, we, we wanna do that, I think that's a safe.
I just wanna make it clear that.
No, I, right, but I, I think that's a safe, a safe place to be.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
I agree, I think it, it, especially because of the way inflation is, and a lot of these increases in the budget are.
We're gonna have.
Inflation based, you know, the, and honestly, some of the big things that add up to that sixty-six thousand dollars are, you know, the huge.
Fifteen thousand dollars. Which is interesting, we're not the only, did you see the news?
Fifteen thousand dollar increase there.
News tonight, yeah.
Yeah, Essex is really.
They went from, their per capita went from three dollars a person to eighteen dollars.
They're having a fit and they want answers on like where, where the, they wanna see stuff, because.
Well, I mean, and that, again, I, I would say our budget is, I'd say pretty darn good considering, I mean, if, the, for, for 2023, with the increases that we've got for the, uh, new professional services, for the auditors, for the, the substantial increase in, um, in the ambulance contract, which is in necessity, the fuel increases that we've anticipated that, you know, hopefully.
Pretty much everything is up, is really what it comes down to, so.
Hopefully gas prices come down and that becomes a mute point.
And, I mean, Department has did a good job submitting budgets too. Nobody came at us with a forty-five thousand dollar increase this year, you know.
Well, and, you know, as, as we talked with Wade, you know, and, you know, talked with the chief about, you know, just, I think there's a good compromise and consensus with what we've put together for a budget package, so, um, so anyway, that's just, I just wanted to make sure as we're thinking about, what we're gonna use for fund balance, so. Do we wanna? Do we wanna wait on that until next meeting?
Yes.
So we can formalize it and then.
I don't know if that sixty-seven is exactly, if that's what you're gonna want, unless you just wanna just do sixty thousand.
Well, I guess we kinda like, I'd, I'd like to know where we're at exactly, and then we can decide.
Exactly.
Closer to fifty-seven thousand.
I think it, it's whatever, whatever our budget.
Offset.
Offset, yes, to bring it back to what it was year over year, so whatever last year's budget was, compared to that, that difference is what I think we should be looking at.
So let's get, yeah, we'll get to finalize.
Finalize that number and then, decide from there, yep.
Good.
And we'll, so we'll make that decision at the next meeting. So, that, that's that part.
Did you have anything else, Carrie, were you still working on?
Yeah, she had the, um, town meeting.
Articles.
Articles, proposed articles, obviously it's all the standard stuff.
So obviously the one, the budget, putting those.
Numbers. Obviously update those numbers, yeah. I don't think there's anything really outstanding for additional articles other than.
When do we have to decide on this? If we're gonna, what's, what's the?
Fourth thirty.
Okay.
Fourth thirty of January, yeah. So, next meeting.
So next meeting, we have, we need to decide on that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
So those had the articles, that I think are gonna be the same, that's the reserve for the, the computers and for the highway.
Correct, yep.
Yep.
That, that's, four, five, six and seven are the, the additional reserve funds that we're creating and then putting funding to. Yep.
So Article two is just the standard, doesn't actually need to even be voted on, it's just if anyone wants to speak about the town report. There's no rule that it has to be accepted or voted on, it's just anyone who wants to make it clarified. And then Article three has to be admitted by law, obviously the date changes every year, so you need to have it approved every year.
Yep.
And the reserves and then the budget. And the one, the last one that is discussed.
Open it isn't, yeah, open it.
Where nothing can be made to the chair to make it available to talk.
Right.
Yep, and so, uh, just so that it's clear, we've said it a couple of times, it's so that it's clear, there is only going to be one article that votes on the fund expenditures for the operating expenses for the town budget, with what is being raised for taxes, we're not separating out the.
Highway.
Highway separate. There's no requirement to separate it out that way, and for ease of, of the meeting and budget approval and discussion, especially with an open meeting, um, an in-person open town meeting, it's not going to affect, um, how the budget's voted on, it's just to, you know, we're simplifying the process.
And the other one that I looked into is the constable.
Right.
So you got, so Jen resigned, you appointed Mark for this election, and he has to be voted in for one-year term, and then he can be voted in again for two-year term, but, um, I know you guys talked about wanting to just have it be an appointed position. So that has to be a scary ballot. So that's, we're not talking little paper ballot where we're rocking.
No, it's an actual, full.
A full ballot voting tent, so.
But I really think we should do that. I mean, we just have to piggyback it, piggyback it on another election. Well, no, but at some point, I think we should do that, it should be the appointed, the way that, that we're doing the, the town constable now.
I suggest.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, and I, I would say, my suggestion would be that we do the, the one-year term now, and then I think at a later, you know, date, we do a, we do an actual Australian ballot, town meeting.
Think that'd be good, yeah.
What do we got coming up, there's just, uh, nothing.
Trash and junk if we wanna go back there.
No, I mean, for elections.
Well, we'll keep that, we'll keep that on another election day.
We'll keep that in mind. I won't keep it till next year.
I think would be good, not make a special.
I mean, you have to make a special day of sitting up there.
That's ridiculous, that's ridiculous, yeah, no, we'll just.
Yeah, we'll keep that in mind.
Yeah.
And I think it's with him and, you know, he's not, he doesn't have law enforcement authority, he's not capable of it, so there's no need to vote on that.
Nope.
He's not called by court, so there's no stripping him of it, because he's not a cat, so it's just voting it in past the town constable.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Should that, should that not be the town civil constable, isn't that really legally, technically legal term?
Technically, he's a constable, he just, he, we, we, the position is the position, it's a constable.
Yeah.
He is, he only has civil authority, we have not, we as a select board have to vote, it's not an actual town vote on this part. The, the position itself is an elected position, um, but we would have to vote and authorize him to be able to have law enforcement abilities. So technically speaking, the constable position is the constable position, so what he, his position is like, there's several other towns that just have, you know, a civil constable, but it, it, the title is still constable.
But still, it is a civil constable.
Correct.
You know, the title is not civil.
I think, yeah.
It's just the constable. Either way, the position, the position by state statute is constable. What we then add to that for many constables is that authorization to conduct law enforcement activities. Um, i- if we do not authorize that, and obviously, um, there are a lot of other requirements that have to be met to be able to give somebody that law enforcement, um, you know, that authorization for law enforcement activity, um, that, we're not gonna authorize that, so. And again, that portion of the constable position itself, what we've done is created a specific job description that is, you know, and, I think it wouldn't be bad to share that at Town Meeting Day, is the constable, the change to the constable position is that, it is, he only has civil authority, because we have not given him additional authority beyond that.
You have a constable that's, that's the general public to the rear path?
I would think.
That, that you're only, it could be a civil ballot and not be law enforcement.
What do you think, Tristan?
Yeah, I, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think this is complicated, this thing is pretty cut and dry, and we, we hired the sheriff's department to do all our.
No, I, I think.
I think most people, you got, you got a pretty good, you come on, uh, most of the town, I think most people know Mark is a constable and he's not a law enforcement official.
So it's. Yes. Correct.
I mean, I think, I know what you're saying, Lise, and I feel that most people know that, and that we're not trying to pull one over on people. The town of Broughton has for, you know, a number of years, had a elected constable with law enforcement authority, which is more of the exception to the rule statewide, but in the town of Broughton, it seems like that's more the norm.
Right, and therefore, in my eyes, there's a distinction between a civil constable.
Yeah, and.
So, and, and that's why I think what would make sense at Town Meeting Day is to have available the job description that we've approved for the position, and, you know, we can explain that as part of, you know, the process for elections, that this is what this position is.
When those articles come up, I think that would be the time for select board chair, the moderator, to just let everybody know.
Yep.
What the position is now.
Yep. Okay.
So, I think that's all good.
All right.
Good.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie.
Um, Dorothy, Assistant Assessor.
Okay, so, so kind of, I'm gonna need you to tell the leaks, um, I gave you all the letter, the two thousand and twenty-two equalization study results.
Yep, yes.
And what that says is that our C O D is, um, twenty, twenty-four point five three, and anything over twenty percent needs to have a reappraisal. Um, so I don't know, we don't know if we'll be getting like an official, I think we get another letter that says, yes, you need, you need to do a reappraisal, but all we've seen from now is the study results. Um, John and I are having a phone team meeting tomorrow with Barb Schleschender, our district advisor, to go over the sales study, which is what generates this report. Um, there are, and there may be some changes to that, I found some properties that aren't on here, that aren't on the sales study that should be, and one that's on there that's not valid sale, so this may, this may change, this is a huge change from last year. Last year it was fifteen point something, and it's gone up to twenty-four point five three, and when I looked at the sales.
Which we can access.
Ten, ten percent.
Yeah, but it's not, I thought it was gonna be like all twenty-twenty-two, but it isn't, it's the two, it's twenty-twenty-one, the, the bulk of, of the problem. And so it's a three-year study, so we've got twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two that we're looking at for sales. But, um, so we're gonna review that with Barb, we're gonna review all the sales with Barb tomorrow on the phone, and then hopefully, um, near the first of February, well, so we have thirty days, once we meet with her tomorrow, we have thirty-five days from December twenty-second to do an appeal. If you don't, if we are not, if what we find tomorrow is not correct, then we have thirty-five days to do that appeal. And we've done appeals in the past, so, um, it's not, it's not a huge deal, but it just needs to be done within thirty-five days. So John and I are aware of that, and then we're gonna meet with Barb and Cy Bailey to kind of go over what the next steps are. There are several different types of reappraisals that we could do, we could do a full reappraisal. Reappraisals that we could do, we could do a full reappraisal, which would be what we did in twenty-nineteen, and normally you try to go at least ten years, so we're only like. Three and a half years out. So we could do a statistical one, and then there's a rolling one, um, the statistical one, which I can't say. Is a, is like four percent of the property, so we look at sales and then enough other properties to bring it up to four percent, so that would be like forty or fifty properties. Which John and I could do, um, and we've talked about that, if we end up doing a full reappraisal, it's going to mean hiring a contractor.
How much was the last time we did an appraisal? How, how, what did it cost?
I forgot that, so um. So we're meeting, we're doing this phone call tomorrow and then Barb and Cy Bailey, we're going to, they're going to tell you where, so in twenty-nineteen, the reappraisal cost um, was sixty-six thousand five hundred. That's what we paid for wages, for, for monoprazol company supplies and postage, and then our wages, Kitty and my wages were not included in that amount. So right down to the reserve fund, we have sixty-three thousand, we budgeted, um, twelve hundred is budgeted in that budget. And then in February, next month, we should get seventy-four hundred and three dollars from the state, they give us eight dollars and fifty cents per parcel. For the eight-hundred-and-seventy-one parcels every year towards our reappraisal, so that'll give us at the end. Once we get the budgeted money, the twelve hundred and the money from the state, that'll give us seventy-one, almost seventy-two thousand. So we're not, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay.
But it wouldn't happen this summer?
Oh, no, no, John is saying.
So we'd end up with more money.
Yes, we've got another, eighty-seven-four, seventy-five hundred, from the state anyway, and then whatever we put in. John is saying like twenty-four or twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. We gotta find a vendor, we've gotta. Um, you know, get everything set up and then, and he said that we can do. Once we decide what we're going to do, then we can do a plan, and so the plan is that we're going to have it done by, you know, April first of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And that's, then the state will approve that and that's our plan, and then we'll work through finding a vendor and everything, um. And I know it's a huge process to start assigning a vendor, and once I got this all set up today and it was all kind of, you know, I kind of know what I'm doing, um. Christie Wright, who's the um. Uh, field director for all the property evaluation or review, sent out this huge email, pretty much a hundred and sixty-five of the two-hundred-and-fifty-four. Municipies, municipalities analyzed, um, need to have a um. A reappraisal, so.
I mean, I know we talked about this a month or so ago, you saw it coming.
Right.
And the discussion at that time was it was going to affect two-thirds of the state or better.
Yeah.
And right now, they're just threatening us and we'll get another letter telling us that we're going to have to do this, kind of like you're thinking.
And some of the um, some of the properties, some of the towns haven't done reappraisals, like I, I have a list and one of them like hasn't done two thousand and three, two thousand and five. So we're, we're much better off and, and all of her, her, her email here says, ten years is kind of the window. Ten years is what we want to do and there's somebody that hasn't done it in the past ten years, so.
But I really want to keep up with that because it's.
You want to keep up.
It's accurate for me.
So that's about all, that's what I know for now, um, I should know more in the next couple of weeks, and I did, um. I'm working on my report for town report, so all I did right at the beginning, I just said that we had this letter, we're including the letter in town report as we always have, and. That we are still working with the state to see what we actually have to do and that there'll be more information in the following weeks. Because I don't, I wanted to get it out there that, you know, we may be looking at a reappraisal, but I don't know the answer at this point.
Okay.
Good. Two thousand and nineteen, you said was when we had that meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, that's ridiculous.
Just before the pandemic?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I think it's extraordinary.
Well, before you end, it'd be five years, if you figure by the time we really do another one.
Yeah, we did, before they did one, I think in two thousand and five, and then they, they, they had, there were issues and so they had to redo it in two thousand and ten. So, and then they went from two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen, so, um, but.
So the only other question I have is, you know, obviously, we're in pretty, it sounds like we're in pretty good shape funding-wise, but. Um, obviously, it's extraordinary circumstances and I know the state has a lot of money, is, you know, are they planning any grants to help? Or any other funding to assist with any of this type of stuff?
I thought maybe this email was going to say, oh, you all don't have to do it right now.
Yeah, yeah.
The email doesn't, it just says, it just tells how many towns, um, year of last reappraisal, um, there's like three towns that have done it, that hadn't done it since two thousand and five. So I don't, I don't envision any grant money.
Okay, gotcha, I just figured.
Yeah, I don't see that coming.
I know it's, I know it's extraordinary, I mean, I, it would, a lot of this is pandemic-driven, you know, and a lot of it's, you know.
Right.
There's a housing bubble going right now that's.
It should all equal out with the reappraisal for stuff that's low, stuff that's high, stuff at the end and what the.
So, I mean, and it sounds like what we need to do is prepare, obviously, if we're going to do one in twenty-four, that'd be five years, but. We should probably stay on, because, you know, who knows what another five years is going to bring, and we probably want to stay on our, stay on the current ten-year window too, so. We probably want to make sure that we're thinking about how we fund.
Yeah, I don't want to rush it out for ten years.
No. Yes.
Because at a hundred, that is going to be a hundred thousand to do a reappraisal or more, it could be.
Yep, yeah.
And um. And they're also, I mean, she's also, Christie also now, also sent out, um, here are the resources, so like the list of. Acreages that are out there, the ones that can, can do this, that can do that, you know, so they're, they're trying to give us as much information as they can, so.
Good, okay.
Hi, John. So I think, I want that paper from me, but I read it, and I think the C O D being that high, that's what affects our education tax rate. So whether we have an appraisal done in twenty-five or whatever, our education tax rates will be higher.
Go down?
Will be higher.
Will be higher, sit down.
Just for you.
Yep.
And note that's not only the cost of the appraisal, that is affecting.
It'll affect tax, tax rates for the education portion of the tax.
Nothing good out of it.
That acts as a state that takes the rich towns and spreads money to the poorer towns, and that's probably how they do it as a C O D to one of those.
And everyone's.
Yeah.
Yep.
Another one of the after the pandemic, we've got to check everybody else where everybody's at.
That's just a bummer.
Since everything got crazy and stuff, it's kind of really the deal, it seems like.
It says it on the back of the.
Yeah, the coefficient of dispersion.
How fairly distributed.
Yeah, absolute difference of each sales region.
Okay, Dorothy, what other kind of things you got, is that it? Oh, good.
All the good news you brought with for ya.
It's all in good for today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy.
And I was kind of relieved, you know, when this first came out, I thought, well, how are we going to do this, you know, either this year or next year, but then when Barbara and Johnny said, no, if we've got a plan. You know, the plan can be.
Yeah.
And some of the, some of the things in Christie's, in Christie's email, said that some of them have got um. Stuff planned out, like two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, so once we have a plan, then.
So we can just plan it out, that we'll do it in twenty.
Yeah, forty-two, forty-two reappraisals.
Thirty.
Are planned for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven, so.
Yeah.
But the numbers are going to change every year, but so.
So just to clarify, was, was the C L A that affects that?
No, the level of.
Yeah.
The C L A.
Does the appraisal, if you see the top paragraph on the backside, C L A less than a hundred, a hundred percent will result in an upward adjustment of the education tax rate.
So we're looking at.
Over at ninety-one on the C L A.
Which means we're looking at eight-point-four percent increase, is that how I'm reading it?
Well, the C L A less than a hundred percent, which we are now.
Yep.
Will result in an upward adjustment for the homestead rate and non-homestead rate.
Okay.
So it's not a twofold effect on.
Seems like everything's.
Please, I can give you a copy of some of my notes to figure.
Of course it is. Don't think anything is going to be out of that.
All right, thanks, Dorothy.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, firing fast. Everybody recovering from the Christmas fires?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Actually, Christmas weekend.
Christmas, yeah, I was busy, yeah.
You guys were like out for two seconds.
Yeah, it was, yeah, um, I guess I would on behalf of the fire department, um, we had the structured fire Christmas morning. And had tremendous community support, um, we had the buckaroos of three oh two, uh, show up and help run their side-by-sides back and forth. Because it was about a half a mile down on a class four road, so those guys were able to drive back and forth, uh, Upper Valley Grill opened up, provided food, P and H provided food.
They donated all this stuff, all that, because I, I tried immediately to get the bread cross and. All sorts of lengthy, lengthy recordings. For what hurricane I needed assistance from and on and on and on, finally talked to a real person and she said, oh, we'll get back to you within two hours, which was not helpful, but then somebody local called me. I don't know, fifteen or twenty minutes, and then called me like three or four more times, and finally, bottom line was, she said, I have no one to send.
Yeah.
So then I called P and H and they said, yeah, they could do some food, and then they did coffee, which I hadn't even thought about them doing, and.
Yeah.
Um, and then when it came right down to it, they, Elaine said they donated everything, so.
Yeah, P and H ended up donating all that, they sent up like four carafes of coffee, bills opened up, made up uh.
Hot sandwiches, um.
Breakfast sandwiches, muffins.
Sandwiches and croissants, muffins and stuff.
I mean, big, the buckaroos running trucks, running the side-by-sides back and forth was tremendous help, um, I know, I mean, even Jody Wolab sent warm food over afterwards, um. There's a lot of people that helped out that, you know, I'm not listing, Tristan Vaughn opened up his shop so we could lay all our hose out in there and, and on thought, and. Sean Stetson showed up with his side-by-side and.
He brought food to the station.
Yeah, it was.
Several people I, I, I know, two or three that bought it, but then we had other people that just, like one gentleman walked in with like a case of water and two huge white bakery boxes, so I have no idea.
Yeah.
You know, who he was or where he got the food, but um.
Well, that's just, I mean, I think, one, it, it just speaks to the, I think our community is, I, I said it before, I mean. And it sounds like, I mean, our, we've got a great community that is supportive of anything that's going on.
Absolutely, the only one thing is, there was only one selectman there, I heard rumors that Zach and I went after fire, we weren't there.
Unfortunately, I was in North Carolina for that.
It was a lot weather.
No, not really, it was just as cold there.
Yeah.
It was, it was eight degrees that morning in North Carolina too, so.
So I mean, not only that, but we had, we had.
Stated for the record that you two were.
We weren't here.
Yeah, stated for the record they were.
Otherwise, we would have had a select board meeting.
Yeah, you couldn't have, I mean, yeah, uh, Harold showed up and Cloud sanded everything up for us and everything too, and so, I mean.
Then Charlie Lincoln actually called his boss, I had already asked Flint State to get ahold of, um, Grackton County Dispatch to get ahold of the Vermont Highway Department, and Charlie Lincoln. Kind of got on the phone and called his boss and said, hey, we got this going on, can I go out, and then his boss had to call, I don't know, the governor or the president or somebody, but they finally said, yes, you can go out, so Charlie came with a truck of salt and sand.
Yeah.
And did a good job.
Yeah, we had, yeah, so I mean, it was.
It's good, sounded like it was a, a tiring structure fire, but it was.
It was.
It was.
Well-supported by.
It was.
Well-supported by the community, so, you know, I'm, you know, that's.
And you got to go back once or twice.
Just went back later that night.
That night, yeah.
Yeah, which inevitably, you get a big structure fire like that that ends up in the cellar.
Yeah.
Yeah, at some point, you got to pull the plug and send the guys back home again.
Yep.
So. But yeah, so I just wanted to express on behalf of the fire department how grateful we were with uh.
Thanks, Aaron.
Would uh, turn out, so.
I think it's a, you know, a big thank you to the fire department for going out on Christmas Day, I mean, that's, that's a hard thing to do and, on Christmas Day especially, but. You know, you guys are willing to step up and, as part of a volunteer fire department, do that to help take care of your community, so.
Yeah, and I mean, yeah, should be mentioned too, that town of Peacham, town of Rygate, town of Walls River, Woodsville, Newbury.
Danville sat in the station.
Danville came down Christmas morning and sat in our fire station, sat in our fire station, protect, to protect the rest of the buildings in town for eight hours, so.
There was thirteen departments involved.
Yeah.
Wow.
At least, Vermont State Police came, they came to check it out.
Yeah.
Um, we had the head, we had the. Um, head of the dispatch of the Grackton County Sheriff's Dispatch, we had him on dispatch, and so he was doing a good, you know, good job helping us and. Care of town and.
Yeah.
Everybody.
So it was.
Unfortunate that there was a fire on Christmas Day for sure, but, you know, great that we have the people that we've got in our community and our, and even our broader community to help.
Yeah.
You know, help out.
I did talk to the, uh, the owner, she called and worked on the thank the fire department, and it was very, felt terrible for her to be on Christmas Day and. And she said, you know, she was asking what she needed to do for town, she'd already disconnected everything and had people to come to empty the tanks and take the tanks away and get the painting tanks away.
Yeah.
She hired someone to smash it up and do whatever, and she felt terrible for the people across the road trying to sell their house, got to look into her burn house, and I was like, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
But she was, she was, you know, obviously sad, upset, but not.
And I mean, that's.
Very, very good, um, follow-up about it.
Yeah, and I mean, that was, you know, perspective of a lot of guys show up Christmas morning and it's like, there are people in this world having worse days than we have today.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yep, without a doubt.
Yeah.
All right, well, thanks, Aaron.
Yep.
Um, anything for constable?
Mark was in today, he just. Tried to talk about the food collection and help run over that with him and then.
Yeah, dogs will be starting up now.
Yeah.
May not really yet, but.
I think, uh, wonder, dog licenses.
Do you do it anytime from now until April first?
April first is when the deadline is, I know we had talked about it, I, I may try to, if I run into Mark, but we should think about putting out like a friendly reminder kind of a thing. I, I know that would be, uh. Just trying to think of how we can be more proactive to not have so many delinquent licenses, but.
We're going to stay after it this year.
Yeah, Mark's all informed, if you want to get started right now.
Yeah, yeah.
And his picture looks good on the website too, I saw.
Which that's good, because we want Mark to, to get involved and have some tasks and to keep him to earn that.
To keep him active, yep, yep.
So Friday night, just before five o'clock, he was out, um, he had his truck down at the bottom of my hill with lights going and his constable reflectors hanging on his truck.
I saw that, yeah.
For the, for the trucks in the library.
Yeah, nice.
And then he walked up to the library and I guess hung out for the whole, for the night.
Nice, that's good.
He was, he was definitely marking the street that, you know, something was going on.
Oh, good.
Excellent.
Good, good.
Excellent.
Fantastic, all right, uh, library, anything from the library?
Um, she was in a couple times this week, really didn't have much to record, and that went well, and she was very happy, but.
Yeah. Good, good. We want to know it was rescheduled, so it's good that it went well, even though it was rescheduled.
She said that she was going to try next year to do it, obviously, before Christmas is tough, at the old time, but even a week or two before, it's tight as she had predicted.
Yeah, at the beginning of the wheat month or something closer, you start getting everywhere after November and.
And all the stores starting in September, but it's a. All right, uh, zoning administrator?
Dan was in today, um, you know, still dealing with a few issues, but he's on top of everything.
Okay.
I talked to a fellow, he did some paperwork done, he, he was in, did that, and after I talked to him, I feel better and it might be not as bad as what Dan is thinking, so. It's all good, all moving forward, so.
All right. Uh, health officer, just one report that we received about a dog bite, um, and the dog was registered in town, correct? So that's on file, nothing else from the health officer except for, we're looking for a health officer, if anybody's interested in being the health officer, please let me know. Um, okay, uh, maintenance? Nothing for maintenance, we good.
Um, it might be under that, um, just wanted to follow up with Aaron about a quote for the, um.
I have reached out to.
Okay, and quote for the three alarms should be connected for fire calls, like what that would entail.
Yeah, it would be the same.
Yeah, it would be the same.
Same type of...
Yeah, it would be one of the same.
All right. And then, um, maintenance is really just about, um, you know, we were thinking about, um, the drainage project, and at some point, we're gonna have to move that can cage from out back, it's gonna have to go somewhere, so...
Who owns that?
Matt, no, no, it's...
Yeah, it used to be the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts, and then the...
Cheerleaders.
And then, it's a, it's a useful town resource, I think, so...
But just keep it in the back of your mind when the drainage does start.
Well, Matt'll have to come move it, and...
Well, he's cautious, you know, this is going to happen, and...
Which I can reach out to Matt and let him know.
I'm wondering, just a thought, maybe, see if, you know, see if we can talk to Harold about putting it down maybe near the town garage.
Are people using it?
I think so, yeah.
And it all goes to Matt?
Well, he, if Linda was here, I think she would say he uses, he takes the money and...
Paints.
Paints, and rolls it into things for kids sometimes, too, and, I, I don't think, he doesn't take the, he doesn't redeem the bottles and put the money straight in his pocket.
Okay.
Um, I don't believe, I think he does, kind of funds projects with it.
Gotcha.
So...
Well, I think we're not, we're a long ways away from the project, but, oh...
Yeah, but it's something they can say.
But I can talk to him and just let him know that we'll plan on doing that, it's gonna need to be moved when we go to do the project until it's done, and then come back, we'll figure it out after that, discuss it, okay?
Well, that sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, I think a spot for it to live would be beside the dumpster long-term, is probably.
Yep. Okay. Uh, IT? Nope, nothing, I think we're good, we're just waiting, once the budget's approved, we'll have some IT work to do.
Move on computers.
Yep. Uh, anything for the planning commission? Still waiting for correspondence from them, right? For, or we need to, we, well, we postponed it, but we're gonna, we need to review the bylaws.
Right. Put that on the...
Yeah, that should be on the agenda at some point.
Bylaws.
Something, yeah, okay. And we need to get that done pretty soon.
They're waiting on us.
Yeah.
They're waiting on us.
But I think we, we have, we have to get it done by February, I think, I don't think...
I think if we put it on the next agenda, we...
Yeah. Okay.
And that's just aside, Michael's not here, but Carrie, no, she just went through it six years ago. Um, that's just something the select board has to look at and say, okay, and if we wanted to change something, we would, we have the authority to change it, but if we changed it, we then have to hold a public hearing on the zoning bylaws all over again, because they're different than what the planning commission held. Does that sound right to you, Carrie?
Yeah, I think you kick it, if you didn't like something, you have to change, and kind of kicks it back to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do a little process, smaller, but you were saying have a, have a informational meeting?
They would have to have, hold a whole new informational meeting, because I'm pretty sure it changes, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we'll, we'll put that on the, on the agenda for the next meeting, and we can get that knocked out. Um, okay, uh, open to the public and other business. Anybody got anything for open to the public or other business? Ms. Leece?
I was, I just wanted to verify, cause I hadn't been in on the topic earlier, but I do understand, or it's my understanding that the employees that are eligible for the health insurance are not going to pay fifteen percent of their premium, instead of ten percent.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And can I, um, get what the wages, the hourly wage is going to be for...
They haven't changed, no wages have changed, as far as, oh, well, they have changed, but there's no raises this year for anybody, it was just the cost of living.
Right, so with the cost of living, I'd like to know what, what the hourly wage is going to be for, for the treasurer, the town clerk, the assistant assessor, and the road commissioner, they put that for you?
So those are all on record, and, I mean, you can come view, like, the town, town holiday time, security.
Does anyone have those numbers available that I can get from right now?
I don't think they have them with them right now, but, like, those numbers are available.
Yeah, those, yeah, they're, they're of public record, so they're, they're available.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anything else for open to the public or other business?
I just wanted to talk about, um, the town report.
Okay.
You know, we're working, starting to really get into it, and write-ups are slowly coming in, um, just wanted to remind everybody that the town report, the only requirement is the financial piece.
All right.
No other piece on that page, and that won't pass through there.
Yep.
Traditionally, the Town of Groton has provided a lot of information in town report, um, it's a lot of work for somebody, for usually a number of somebodies, so, um, I don't think people know that. I think they're, think it's just tape stuff, shuffle it together, and...
Well, also, the idea of if something is missed, or a typo, or something, or a statue that was broken, if you know...
Yeah, yes.
Like I said earlier, you don't have to vote on the town report, you don't have to be accepted.
I think, you know, for, for us, I think the biggest, my opinion about the town report is, we, we as a town have gone above and beyond to provide and communicate a lot of information, so that people know what's happening in town. They see, they, they do see the budget, they get the chance to review the budget before they cover the town meeting, but, you know, it's, it, there's a lot of information, and it's, it's good information, but, um, it's not a requirement. We, we do that, it's part of our budget, but we as a town do that to provide that information to the Town of Groton.
To inform the citizen.
Correct, that's right.
You know, I mean, it's, it's the intention of the, of the select board, certainly, and of the most, and I would say of the town employees, town officials, to provide as much information to the citizens, so that they know what's going on. I mean, everybody in the room, you know, has been in the situation where you discuss something in a public meeting for two weeks in a row, and then have somebody come up to you and ask you something that's, you know, and it's like...
Right, well, it's kind of like budgets, where you spend Saturday working on this, and week after week, and nobody shows up, and then when it's all done, everybody wants to have a, have a say in it, so...
So, I mean, I think the more information we can provide to the townspeople, um, is of greater benefit to the town as a whole.
Yep.
Zach, could you just please verify what the cost of living percentage was, formally, please?
It's higher than it's ever been, it's eight, I think.
Eight-point something.
Eight-point seven.
I think it was eight, yeah, eight-point seven.
So, and I would note, Leece, that it is an eight-point-seven increase, a cost of living increase, and the town budget should not go up eight-point-seven percent. So, if anything, you're, we've cut the budget, even though it's, it has increased from last year's number.
Most of the things, yeah, that were increased, overall, there's been, you know, I think overall, in a lot of our budget lines, there were reductions, because we knew that there were going to be anticipated increases, but some of the things that are necessities that we have zero control over went up this year. Things like our audit went up significantly.
Everybody's fuel line went up.
The, the fuel lines went up, but, you know, so there was a lot of, that make up the large, um, the large portion of what the budget increases are this year. Um, that's with a reduction in, you know, what the town's paying for insurance, you know, plus the cost of living adjustment.
I also wanted to say that, you know, that you have, it said about reminding all departments to be lean on their spending until after town meeting.
Correct.
It's always a given, but I think it's already said.
Right.
But, you know, we're not going by all these things, just because it's a new year.
Well, I think, things like... You've been pretty good about that.
Right, but I was just thinking, it should be said.
But, you know, things like, yeah, absolutely, things like computers, obviously, that's a, a new budget line that we need to take care of getting, but, you know, we need to get through town meeting before we can buy those things and make sure that the budget's on par.
That's right, that's right.
So it's, it should be basic operation expenditures only, not anything above and beyond that, until the budget's approved. Anything else for open to the public? I've got one thing, but I'll save it for last, cause everybody good? So, um, I've had a lot of thought and consideration, um, and I have made the decision, based on my life circumstances, um, changing very dramatically in the last couple of months, um, that I'm going to, and I'll submit this in, in writing, but I'm going to step down as the chair of the select board, um, I'm going to remain a member of the select board, and will run for reelection, um, still in the spring, or at town meeting day, uh, but, you know, I wanna make sure that I'm not, you know, shortchanging the, the duties and responsibilities of the chair, um, which with my, you know, current life circumstances, as, you know, a newly, um, as a newly single parent, um, you know, there are a lot of things that, you know, life requires, so...
Which we understand completely, and we're very sorry for that.
Yeah, thank you, very much.
Now, will you continue, would you continue to be assistant chair? Do you want...
I, I'd be happy to be the assistant chair, um, and I think at the next meeting, we can, you know, we'll just...
We'll switch that over officially.
Yeah, we'll switch that over officially, and make an, you know, we can, um, update the appointment for, for that, and, but I'm, you know, happy to, to, you know, help as the assistant to run meetings if, if necessary, you know, if either you guys, you know, whoever wants to be the chair doesn't, can't make the meeting, or whatever, um, happy to help with that, but...
Okay.
Yep, so I just wanna, like, again, just, you know, I'm planning, still planning to stay on the select board, um, and just be in a different capacity for the time being, so...
I would be willing to take over for chair, if you're also, if you're okay with it.
I was hoping you would be. You earned this praise, I was hoping it hadn't changed, so...
So we'll, and we'll, we can update that officially at the next meeting, so it's on the agenda, but...
Okay.
Good. Otherwise, anything else? We good?
Good.
Um, we'll sign orders following the meeting, I'll move to adjourn.
Checking in.
All those in favor, see them by five, I say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, have a great evening, everybody, have a great weekend.